Dreaming. Okay, it's good to go.
Okay, thanks Sean.
Yes, sir.
Okay, welcome everybody to the November 24th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Christie, can we please have a roll call?
Sure. Beerstead.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Plunkett. Watson.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks Christie. Next, two minutes from the November 10th meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of the minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have first and a second. Any questions or comments? Hey Christie, we have first and second on the minutes.
Start the vote with Mr. Plunkett.
Hi.
Odine.
Hi.
Watson.
Hi.
Gagne.
Hi.
Morissette. Downing.
Hi.
Beerstead.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, next I have approval of the minutes with Mr. Gagne.
Uh, the bills?
Approval of the bills. Sorry about that.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of the bills in the amount of $1,555,647.72, subject to the controller.
Second.
Okay, first and a second. Any questions or comments?
I just have one comment. I spoke with Utility Director Westus earlier today regarding one of the bill items of $62,000 and some change regarding manhole rehabilitation. If folks have realized that we came through and replaced some of the old brick and clay manholes, and then we came back again and ripped them out and then put them back in, that was because they were a little too high and our snowplows would have hit those, creating damage not just to the snowplow but also tearing out the top of the manhole, creating future damage and sending manhole covers flying as the plow goes by. Aside from that, my question was, was any taxpayer funding used to pay for that redo essentially? And I was instructed that it was not. That was an error on the contractor's side and they covered those costs, so.
Okay. Okay, Christie, we have first and a second on the bills.
That was Mr. B.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Morissette.
Hi.
Gagne.
Hi.
Watson.
Hi.
Beerstead.
Hi.
Plunkett.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks Christie. Public comments. John, anybody around at City Hall for public comments?
No, there's no one here.
Okay. Next, with the consent agenda. First, acknowledgment of the following minutes from the Library Board from 10:05, Land Commission from 10:06, Utility Department of State from 19, and the Western Solid Facility Commission from 9:17. Next one is a resolution approving weights and measure assessment schedule. Next one is a resolution approving Baker Tilly US LLP as the city's auditing firm for the 2020 through 2022. Next one is a resolution approving shared ride taxi grant application to the state of Wisconsin Department of Transportation for operating assistance for the year 2020. The next one is a resolution approving lease agreement with Running Inc. for the year 2021. Next one is a resolution regarding agreement with the shared counties for 2021 shared taxi ride. This would be between St. Croix and Pierce County. And the last one is a resolution accepting election grant funds. This resolution would accept $7,449 from the Center for Tech and Civic Life to use for directly offsetting expenditures related to safe election supplies and compensation for election staff. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number seven.
Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number four and number eight.
Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Downing, or I'll take a motion on the rest of them, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda items two A, B, C, D, three, five, six, and that's it.
Second. We've got a first and a second. Any questions or comments on what we're doing? Okay, Christie, I have first and a second consent agenda.
We'll start the vote with Mr. Gagne.
Hi.
Plunkett. Beerstead.
Hi.
Morissette.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Odine.
Hi.
Watson.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gagne, or I'm sorry, Mr. Tony pulled number seven.
Resolution regarding agreement with counties for 2021 shared ride taxi service. My question's for our Administrator Scott Simpson. Do we have a five mile map available for our shared ride taxi service that goes for the five miles outside of our city available to the public? Online?
I'm not aware if we do or not, council member. It's something we probably could establish if we don't. Is that?
I would like to see one created. Yeah, I would like to see one created in the future, if possible. That's all I got. Mr. Mayor, I move approval for consent agenda item number seven.
Second. Okay, any other questions on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I would second Sean's request as well. I've called a couple times. Say I had my car at the dealership in Hudson getting some repair work, that's where we bought it from. I called and said, hey, where do you provide service to? Well, we go to the hospital in Denny's, but you won't drop me at Hudson Chrysler. It's like, okay, I get it, you gotta have some limitations, but it'd be nice to actually have that on a website so folks can actually go on there. And we have like a set of where they deliver versus just kind of by the seat of their pants. I think that'd be a good thing. Good thinking, Sean.
Do we have a first and a second on res- seven?
First by Mr. Downing and second by Mr. Watson. We'll start the voting with Mr. Morissette.
Hi.
Watson.
Hi.
Plunkett. Gagne.
Hi.
Odine.
Hi.
Beerstead.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gagne, you pulled number four?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I am going to be abstaining for number four due to a conflict of interest. Somebody else can move to approve that.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of consent agenda item number four.
Okay. First and a second. Any other questions or comments on number four? Christie, we have first this resolution approving Baker Tilly?
First by Mr. Watson and second by Mr. Beerstead. Start the voting with Mr. Watson.
Hi.
Plunkett. Beerstead.
Hi.
Morissette. Gagne.
Hi. I abstained, sorry.
Oops, sorry. Oh, excuse me. Mr. Downing.
Hi.
Odine.
Hi.
Thank you.
Gagne, you pulled number?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to pull this. It's kind of an uncomfortable topic. I definitely like the thought of us receiving $7,449 in a grant. My only concern with this is, you know, even in the write-up from staff and from the attorney, that there is no quid pro quo, there is no strings attached to this item. Anytime being a nonpartisan representative, whether it's grant money coming from a nonprofit or a group that's coming from a left or right leaning, I just want to make sure that we're doing this right and we're not accepting funds that are coming from an organization that might have a leaning and political activism to it. A basic search, I didn't know who this organization was. I did a basic search of the Center for Tech and Civil Life and saw a ton of write-ups regarding who their funders are, what kind of leanings they have and political activisms, left or right, middle, it doesn't matter. We're a nonpartisan elected body. I just, I don't feel comfortable voting yes on this because of that matter. Do I like the thought of $7,449 going for elections? Absolutely. Do I think that our municipal clerks do a fantastic job of not letting bias or any strings attached into our local government? Absolutely. I think they do a fantastic job. But I'd hate to vote on something that would give a perspective that we're accepting money and something down the road that might come back to haunt us or put us on a lawsuit per se, not that we would get sued, but it's just, there's a lot of different perceptions there. What are the real motives of this group of giving us this money? I mean, besides just helping out our elections, I guess that's kind of unheard at this point, and that's why I feel uncomfortable with it. So I'll be voting no.
Okay, anybody else have anything on this one?
Mr. Mayor, before you take a motion, there is a technical correction to the resolution which does make a difference. I wanted to point that out. We're missing the word "not" in the four, let's see, one, two, three, fourth, whereas. It should read, whereas this grant funding will not be used to supplant budgeted funds associated with safety supplies. So one of the stipulations of the grant is it doesn't supplant budgeted election funds. We believe that we will have funds in excess of the budget related to activities and getting ready, but if we do not, then obviously we won't submit for the full amount of the grant because it's not similar to a federal subplantation, which we're familiar with in other grants we've got. We can't be just, this isn't meant to just reduce the amount of tax levy going into elections. It's meant to cover expenses in addition to what was planned.
Okay.
So is everybody clear on the resolu- so in the memo, it talks about that, and then the grant agreement that was included is clear on that. The resolution is missing the word "not" to clarify that. This is not to supplant budgeted funds.
Everybody okay with that?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Um, could you, Mr. Simpson, could you clarify specifically what the funds will be used for, for our city?
We'll use the grant according to the grant agreement that, so it's likely to cover the cost of extra part-time workers we had for election processing and any supplies related to Plexiglas or other modifications we had to make for elections.
Okay, thank you.
Talk on this first, then we'll discuss if there's any more discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item number eight on the consent agenda election grant agreement.
The second. Okay, got a first and a second. Is there any other discussion or comments?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have a com-
Yep, yep.
I actually appreciate, I actually appreciate the idea of having oversight on everything that comes before the council. From what I can tell, this looks like a perfectly good donation to our city for a very specific reason, but I think that Mr. Gagne brings up a good point. We should have oversight on everything to do. So, thank you, Mayor.
So Christie, we have first and a second on the resolution number eight, accepting election grant funds.
First by Watson, second by Odine. We'll start the voting with Mr. Beerstead.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Plunkett. Odine.
Hi.
Gagne.
No.
Watson.
Hi.
Morissette.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, before we go on to, well, we'll go on to the resolution, we have two ordinances. Number nine is a resolution approving state municipal agreement for SDP urban funds, and number 10 is for Lawson Lane, and number 10 is a resolution state municipal agreement for locally funded projects, which would be the Powell Bridge, the redeck design. City Engineer Chris Rauli will give us a little presentation on these first before we go into that. So Crystal, take it away.
There we go.
Okay, are you guys able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, good evening. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I'd like to speak with you about the state municipal agreements, or SMA's, for Lawson Lane and Powell Avenue Bridge located just west of Wall Green on the former county highway double M. Each of these projects will be a big undertaking for us, and I'm looking forward to the beginning of work. Tonight, I'm going to take a little time to discuss the details for the South Lawson Lane reconstruction and the roundabout at Cascade Avenue. Then I'll move on to talk about the Powell Avenue Bridge and the need for a deck rehabilitation project. Finally, we'll discuss the state municipal agreement in general and the specificities of the agreement for these two projects. I know many of you were here in River Falls prior to construction of the Belt Line on the east side of town. If you were coming to the city from Eldorado, you would drive up Lawson Lane, past the UWRF farm, then turn left on the Cascade Avenue near Moody's Car Dealership. The route for Highway 65 cut through this path and up onto Main Street. As such, Lawson Lane saw significant traffic, including heavy trucks. In 1991, the Belt Line opened and Lawson no longer received the truckload that it used to, but since that time, it has seen increasingly more traffic, especially since the high school was constructed on Cemetery Road. A portion of the roadway is routed through an area of wetlands and lowly soils. This amount of moisture under and near the roadway has caused extensive deterioration of the subway and the pavement. You'll notice the image on the upper right-hand side of the slide, the road cuts through a really marshy, lowland area. Each spring and throughout the summer, we're filling in several potholes on this stretch of roadway. A mill and overlay was considered, but it was determined that it wouldn't be the best use of funds unless we were able to correct the underlying issues. Further, in 2008, the council adopted the Cascade Avenue Plan that showed roundabouts at the intersections of Cascade Avenue with Spruce Street, Sixth Street, and Lawson Lane. In 2012, phase one of that project was constructed, including the roundabouts at Spruce and Sixth, however, phase two hasn't been completed. Last fall, staff prepared an application for Wisconsin DOT funding to reconstruct South Lawson Lane and to build a roundabout at the intersection of Cascade Avenue. This spring, we were notified that our application was successful. The project will include reconstruction of the roadway from the base soils up through the pavement layer. Turbine gutter and storm sewer will be incorporated to correct drainage issues in the area. The existing 10-foot wide asphalt trail west of the roadway will also have to be reconstructed with this project. Finally, the project will include the construction of a roundabout at the intersection of Cascade Avenue, as was planned for back in 2008. The extents of this project are Cemetery Road Roundabout on the south side and the intersection of Cascade Avenue on the north. The other SMA that we're seeing tonight is for a project on Powell Avenue Bridge. We took jurisdiction of this street and bridge from St. Croix County in 2018. In fall 2019, St. Croix County did their final inspection of the bridge and handed over the records. In spring 2020, we were contacted by a resident who had noticed a hole in the bridge. After further investigation, it was determined that the bridge was rapidly deteriorating from the underside of the deck. In the photos on this slide, the upper right image shows a small hole at the joint of the deck and the abutment. The picture on the right shows another hole on the southeast side of the deck, and the lower picture shows the hole on the deck from the underside of the bridge. As you can see, concrete has flaked away, which is known as spalling, and the rebar is exposed. The 35 mile per hour sign was used several years ago to try to cover the hole and fill it in. This summer, the weight limit for this bridge was restricted to 10 tons, and we began investigating the quickest and most cost-effective way to rehabilitate this deck. The bridge was constructed in 1973. In the early 90s, the bridge was repaired by placing a membrane over the deck and paving over top of the membrane. This was common practice at that time, but what wasn't known was that the membrane would trap water vapors from under the bridge. Over time, this contributed to concrete spalling from the bottom side up. We've since learned that most other bridges with this component have seen the same deterioration as this one. This fall, Wisconsin DOT sent a crew to help us make some short-term repairs to the areas that were particularly bad. Looking into the future, the most significant deterioration will take place during periods of freeze thaw, so the bridge will be closely monitored and will continue to be posted at 10 tons until the full deck rehabilitation project can take place. It's important to note that these deck deficiencies are not of the sort that would cause the bridge to collapse into the river. The substructure of the bridge looks good. As the deck continues to deteriorate, we may see additional areas of spalling from the underside of the bridge, as well as increasingly larger potholes on the top of the bridge. We'll continue to monitor it closely until a project can be constructed. WISSTAT has a program, the Local Bridge Program, that will pay 80% of Bridge Deck Rehabilitation Project. However, our bridge is currently not in the queue for these funds. After meeting with county and WISSTAT officials, it was determined that the best course of action for the quickest deck rehab project with WISSTAT funding would be to begin by funding the design 100% locally. The design phase would include preparation of the structure rehabilitation report, the environmental document, and the project plan. We would then apply for funding for the construction of the deck in the 2022 to 2027 local bridge program. If this project's funded, it would be notified in early 2022, we would revise contracts with the DOT, complete any necessary property acquisition identified in the design phase, and go through plan review throughout 2022. The construction would take place in early 2023. If the construction project is awarded, the SMA that we are seeing tonight will be revised to reflect funding for the construction portion of the project. At that time, we'll be bringing it before this body again in order to revise this agreement. So what is a state municipal agreement? Well, it's an agreement that lays out the terms and project specifics for any project that involves state or federal participation, be that financial participation or even just design review, as is the case with Powell right now. The Lawson Lane project is estimated to cost approximately $4 million. This includes project design, real estate acquisition, construction, and construction oversight. The SDP Urban Program funding Lawson Lane is an 80/20 program with the state funding 80% of the project and the locals funding the remaining 20%. In addition, if utility adjustments are necessary, the locals are responsible for 100% of these costs. The SMA for Lawson Lane is included in the packet. Briefly, it spells out that WISSTAT's contribution to the project will be capped at $3.1 million. The city will pick up remaining costs, which, with utility adjustments, will amount to approximately $1 million. The schedule for this project lays out design work starting in '21, real estate acquisition in '22 and '23, and construction in '24. The Powell Avenue Bridge project is estimated to cost approximately $1 million. At this time, project design, which will be funded 100% locally, is estimated at $60,000 with an additional $10,000 for review of project plans by WISSTAT. The local bridge program is also an 80/20 program with the state funding 80% of the project and the locals funding 20%. If our local bridge application is successful, the remaining project construction costs anticipated at $930,000 will be split with the WISSTAT contributing 80% and city contributing 20%. These numbers will be finalized at the time the SMA gets revised for construction. So that's all I have for you tonight. Does anyone have any questions regarding this project?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Plunkett.
Thank you. Thank you very much, City Engineer. What is the likelihood that we will receive that 80/20 funding on the bridge project?
Sure. I have had really great conversations with Bill Zimmer at the Wisconsin DOT, and he doesn't anticipate any issues of us getting that funding. He can't say for sure, but he realizes the severity of this deck. Yep.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Odine.
Um, Ms. Raleigh, you say that we got like a final report from St. Croix County before we accepted the bridge. Did that report indicate that the deck was in such bad shape?
So the report did note some deterioration from the bottom side of the deck, and it had been noted the past few years of inspections. St. Croix County came over this spring quite a few times when this was happening, and the inspector did note that it got significantly worse over this past winter.
Did they own up to repairing the pothole with a road sign?
There's nobody else that could have done it.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I've just got a general comment. I mentioned this to staff as well, but, you know, we need to do these two projects. There's no doubt about it. We can't have a deficient bridge, and certainly the Cascade-Wasson Lane intersection is going to see increased traffic, and the South Lawson Lane is, you know, for the most part underwater. My concern long-term is if we start, you know, we look at that bandwidth of 23 to 25, and we've got a lot of projects facing us, and I guess I'm just, at this point, just raising the alarm a little bit. It seems like staff always comes through in the end with creative ways to address these financial challenges, but, you know, just the wastewater treatment plant that we've had a discussion about, the potential impact of the dam coming out, and I just put a $2 million figure on that, the roundabout and can South Lawson and the bridge, we're almost at $10 million right there in a two-year period. So I just want us to be aware of the fact that these projects are necessary. We don't like deferred maintenance. We don't approach things that way, but boy, we got a lot of things to consider as we go forward as a city. So that's all I've got.
Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I think this South, or this Lawson Lane reconstruction is timely. As older person Morissette said, we're going to see an increased amount of traffic on Cascade, and I think we've seen that with the university. Obviously, with COVID, there's a little bit less traffic these days, but in the long-term scheme of things, with CVTC purchasing the corner, going to be doing some rehab there, I can only think that they're going to grow their campus and bring more traffic and students into the area. And then, you know, someone that frequents that corner of South Lawson and Cascade, I definitely think that roundabout's going to bring a safety improvement, maybe some sidewalks that would come along with that project as well to improve the safety for everyone in that area. So definitely in favor of it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Watson.
Ms. Rowley, you mentioned a time period for possible or property acquisition. Do you anticipate that either one of these projects is going to require the city to purchase property or easement in order to complete them?
I'm sure that the roundabout project will require property acquisition, especially that corner up on the northwest side is really tight, and the Moody's corner is really tight, too. So I'm sure we'll need acquisition there and then temporary easements probably along the rest of the project. Powell Bridge, I'm not as sure. I've heard some estimates that we may have to install wider guardrails, in which case we might need to purchase right away for easement. But until we get further into the design process, we'll be talking about it for sure.
And then one more question. You know, given that the Powell Bridge situation has been kind of documented on a deteriorating basis over the last few years, is there a reason why, you know, we didn't apply to get into an earlier funding cycle? Did it just not, like, rise to the top of the priority list?
We just took jurisdiction of that bridge. So it was not really on our radar until, you know, that hole showed up this year. So Wasson disappeared for me. I think it's still here.
Could you hear that, Hal?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Downey.
Crystal, could you describe the conditions of which and when we got the bridge under our jurisdiction?
Sure. So in 2018, Mr. Ransky obviously was still a city engineer, and that was when the jurisdictional transfer was completed. At that time, I understand he reviewed, you know, the bridge records coming into that transfer. But really, as I understand it, a lot of significant deterioration happened last winter. So in 2019, St. Croix County had what they call the WISDOT super truck. So a truck that actually comes and brings people underneath the bridge to take a really good look at it. And they only get that truck every 10 years or five years or something. So they had that truck, so they inspected that bridge in 19 and then made that the handover to us. And then after that is when it really deteriorated.
Thank you, Crystal.
You're welcome.
Questions right now? Okay. Let's move on. We'll start with Resolution Number Nine, approving state municipal agreement for STP urban funds for Wasson Lane. And I will take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
I've got the Resolution approving state municipal agreement for a state local bridge project, Powell Avenue Bridge.
Second. Oh, wait a minute. Was that supposed to be Wasson?
Yeah, this is Wasson. Sorry. Mr. Downing, this was Wasson Avenue.
Isn't that what I said?
Or Wasson Lane. No, you said Bridge, Powell Bridge.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, approval for Resolution approving state municipal agreement for STP urban funds Wasson Lane.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Is there any more questions or comments on this one? Okay, Christie, we have a first and a second on Number Nine, a Resolution approving the state municipal agreement for STP urban funds for Wasson Lane.
First by Downing, second by Gagne. Start the vote with Mr. Plunkett.
Aye.
Odine.
Aye.
Watson. Gagne.
Aye.
Morset.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Thank you, Pierceet.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christie. Okay, Number 10 is a Resolution approving state municipal agreement for locally funded project, Powell Avenue Bridge. I'll take a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve the Resolution author approving state municipal agreement for the state-let bridge, local bridge project, Powell Avenue Bridge.
Second.
Okay, first and a second. Any other questions or comments on this one? Okay, Christie, we have first and the Resolution approving the state municipal agreement for locally funded projects. This would be the Powell Avenue Bridge redeck design.
First by Morset, second by Downing. Start the voting with Ms. Odine.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Morset.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Watson. Pierceet.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
You.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, next, we're going to have a review of Resolution Number 6501. This is a Resolution related to the COVID-19 public health concerns, recommending the use of face coverage in public in the city of River Falls. We'll start with questions for staff, if there's any.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question for staff.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Downing.
Do we have a current budget for educating our public regarding COVID? And if so, does our educational approach inform people that we could actually, that they could easily print and give to somebody else if they had direct questions about this, how specifically we're handling it?
I think I can take a stab at that, and Scott can help me out if needed. So I guess the short answer is no, we don't have a specific communications or advertising budget related to COVID. However, I think we've been doing fine using our existing budgeting funds, you know, available to us for marketing, communicating, advertising, and such. A lot of it is kind of grassroots, staff-driven efforts and collaboration with regional partners. So there's little cost to that. And I think they've made some pretty good infographics and materials that certainly can be printed off and distributed throughout the community. I should add that our communications manager is part of a collaborative work group that includes representatives from Alina, the university, public health, and other stakeholders in the immediate region to make sure that there's coordinated and consistent messaging amongst them.
I always appreciate our mayor's weekly messages. I hope we can continue doing that, too. So, yeah, thank you, Jason.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to offer.
Sorry, Jason.
No, I do have a couple bullet points, if you don't mind.
Yep.
Just as council knows, we recently, I guess for lack of better terminology, turned our dial back to a safer-at-home operating status here in the city due to the rapidly increasing rise in COVID-positive cases and fatalities, related fatalities in our area. We're being mindful of staff activities and reducing staff attendance at meetings and in-person events, et cetera. You may have noted that the governor recently extended his masking order last week. He extended it for 60 days and his state of emergency for another 60 days. I'm remaining hopefully optimistic that the governor and his Republican elected colleagues in Madison are beginning to have conversations, and we hope that they have fruitful conversations. On Friday, the Pierce County Health official issued an emergency order restricting any gatherings in indoor spaces to 25% of posted capacity, or in lieu of that, 113 square feet per person. I would like the council to know that prior to issuing that, the health official did consult with myself and also reported that she consulted with the Chamber of Commerce. So I think it's encouraging that those decisions aren't made solely in a vacuum, and I presume that she consulted with, you know, others throughout the county. She also shared with us that she is not aware of any particular compliance concerns within the city of River Falls. So I think that was good news to hear. UWRF continues to support the community testing site. That is being held on Tuesday and Wednesday of this week. You do have to register in advance. People that would like to get a test there can register at doineeda covid19test.com. That testing site is typically Tuesdays through Fridays, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. But again, this week, it's just Tuesday and Wednesday. We do have some city staff supporting that test site as well, and they continue to need volunteers. Anybody that was interested in volunteering could contact me, and I can facilitate that. I also would like to add that we're beginning to have, kind of, this is good news. The word vaccine is beginning to come up in conversations with our health official. So I think we're optimistic that there's a light out there towards the end of the tunnel. There is no detailed kind of timeframes yet officially provided to us. However, our public health officials are in the midst of those conversations as they come from the federal government through the state health services down to local public health. And local public health will be, would be the authority, if you will, on vaccinations, and the city stands by, ready to support or respond to that if or as needed. And I guess with that, I'll entertain any questions that anybody may have.
Questions? Is anybody for Jason?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Plunkett.
Thank you. So we've seen essentially, Jason, the rapid rise in cases with the plan that we have in place to prevent a rapid rise of cases.
Yes, I think that's fair. I guess with the caveat, yes, we have seen a rapid rise in cases. I think if, when our plan, our crushing COVID plan that we as a city developed, certainly was our part to do what we can to flatten the curve, if you will.
So really, we don't have a crushing COVID plan. We've got a kind of tickle COVID as it wanders past plan? Or smile with COVID and wave on the street, maybe call it your natural COVID plan?
I think what we have was an eye-catching title to a plan that is our best effort to try to slow the rate of spread and keep the curve as flat for as long as we were feasibly able to do so.
And this plan has, as of today collectively, along with our neighbors that are implementing similar measures, resulted in 40 deaths in Pearson-St. Croix County.
I believe that's, yeah, I believe that there has been 40-something deaths in the two counties. Whether that's a result of our plan, I wouldn't necessarily agree with that, but I think your number of the deaths is pretty close to accurate.
We've also made good strides in protecting our employees, which was one of the aims of our crushing COVID plan. And so we have seen that we're doing better as a population of our employees than the population as a whole. And we believe and have been told that that's based on the measures that we've taken in the workplace to try to contain close contacts and others in the workplace. So there's a number of efforts within the plan that have been successful. But certainly, we, like everybody else, are experiencing living in a community spread.
I think you bring up a very good point there that with proper actions taken, we actually can significantly reduce the rate of infections and the number of people that are dying, the odds of introducing this disease into our assisted-living facilities and the people that are in very high mortality rate groups. I think we're on the review of the Resolution Number 6501 on the agenda here. Considering those points raised, Mr. Simpson, it would seem to me, and I don't know about you, but it seems to me that there's potentially much more that our city and our council could be doing to prevent the loss of life that is ongoing.
Yeah, I'm not convinced that there is practical policy options for the city of River Falls City Council. I think if we had our own health department, there may be different options, such as what the city of Racine is attempting. But as you've heard long ago, the options for us legally to implement any measures with teeth are limited. That's at least the best advice that we have from the city attorney and my research, talking to peers. I think frankly, we have some limitation in our ability to be aggressive in in that, if that was something that the council chose to do.
So potential options that exist for the council would be, for example, requiring masks at all times during establishments that are licensed. Is that correct, or am I mistaken?
Already requirement.
Yeah, I don't know that that was the opinion of the city attorney, that we could do that. We likely could have done that with new establishments. I believe that's what we discussed at the time of liquor license issuance. I think there is clearly some unresolved legal questions about that, understanding that the city council with home rule powers has the ability to take measures for health, welfare, and safety that are not otherwise prohibited by the Constitution or state statute. But Mr. Gerhart's available on the call this evening and can elaborate. But, you know, we received, you know, his opinion quite some time ago, and I don't believe that there's been significant case law that's changed his opinion, but that would be a question for him.
I'd appreciate directing that question for him and, again, looking at bringing before the council a discussion of these measures. I think that, at this point, the loss of life is unconscionable.
Councilman Plunkett, at this time, as we discussed back in April and March, I don't think it's necessarily appropriate to just restrict licensed premises to have a mask requirement. If the city were to do that, it would have to be a mask requirement of broad applicability under the general home rule powers to protect health, safety, and welfare. That is certainly something the council can consider, although I'm not sure, you know, from an enforcement standpoint or how it really would differ from the current mask mandate that Governor Evers has in place. But that's something the council could consider.
I think you bring up a very interesting point there, that really we should be looking at a broader mask mandate at this point. As we look at the pipeline, just as we have a pipeline for highway construction projects, we have a pipeline for people that are already infected and will be placing additional pressure on our already overburdened hospital system. This is at the point now where it is no longer possible to ignore the impact that this is having on community health, and no longer possible, as a member of this council, for me to continue to not say something about the necessity to reduce the spread in our community.
Mr. Mayor? You're muted, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to touch on a couple things. I frequently patronize our local business with takeout and some of those places where I can distance and wear masks in and out, you know, trying to make it mandatory to wear a mask while I'm sitting there chomping on some food. That'd be tough. Obviously, in and out, I'm wearing masks. Where I'm going with this is if you love your local restaurants at home, you love Mariachi Loco, you love West Wind and Juniors and all these other businesses that are downtown or in our city. If you love those and you want those post-COVID, we need to patronize those folks because a lot of those We we need to patronize those folks because a lot of those businesses are struggling. The business owners that I talk to frequently um say it's become a very tough burden on them to try to um overcome the cost of doing business, but also the income that's coming in. So if you love these businesses, you you need to start doing some takeout. A lot of them offer delivery. Um, you don't even have to walk into their facility. They'll bring it out to you. And most of these businesses are sanitizing highly. They're wearing masks. They're doing everything they need to. Um, just had it delivered for me and my wife and daughter the other night. Um, gal was wearing a mask, set it down up front and, you know, had my food. Um, and I know they're running a clean atmosphere and environment because I've been in their mask um and checked it out. So if you love your local businesses, you you still need to patronize them. Otherwise, we won't have them post-COVID.
Ms. Ms. Odine?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got some questions for Mr. Stroud, if I may. Um, uh, just just clarifying a little bit. Um, are you there, Jason?
I am. Hopefully, I'm back up now.
Yes, you're right. Um, uh, our crushing COVID plan was always a a city plan, is that, I mean, a a plan for the city as, um, you know, a a public institution, it's an employer, correct?
Correct. The intention was to be a blueprint, if you will, for for our city facilities and municipal operations.
Right, exactly. So it wasn't, it wasn't something that was, um, we were, we were trying to be a good example for others, correct?
Sure, yeah, that, I wish I would have thought to put it that way, yes.
Well, well, it it and I, well, Scott mentioned this, and I wanted to ask you a little more about this, um, uh, whether or not uh, can you talk a little bit about um how uh how city employees have been kept safe?
Sure. Um, you know, I think the reality is we have had some city employees get COVID, however, I think we we consider, knock on wood, we consider um so far, our efforts a success in that we haven't had to shut down any major business units. We've been able to keep up our public safety and public works operations and utility responses and field duties, and we have not yet had to call upon any mutual aid resources or neighbors to come fill in for us because we have major staff outages. So we have had the 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 COVID case or close contact case here or there within our staff, just like lots of other people are dealing with in our community. But I think that's how, that that's the benchmark for success, I think, that I see.
Okay, have you, are are you aware of any um uh uh there have been several um city employees I know who have had COVID. Are you aware of them spreading uh that through any of their city activities?
No, I'm not aware of any COVID spread within the kind of city workforce community, if you will. Um, we we have had a few cases of where where one positive case kind of resulted in some coworkers being identified as close contacts. But but I'm not aware of any of those turning into a positive case.
Yeah, that that was my, that was my response. That's that's, that's, that's really good. I mean, that is about as uh as safe as you could possibly keep your workforce. Um, and I'm glad to hear that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Stroud.
Yep, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Watson. I was.
Um, Mr. Stroud, uh, just yesterday, I believe, or maybe, I I think it was yesterday, um, the state of Minnesota announced um a contact tracing um effort in conjunction with uh Apple and Google where um built into the uh phone devices is a uh an application that you can opt into that'll will allow people to be able to um uh be notified if they have come into close contact with someone who is showing positive symptoms. Um, I looked into that for myself uh here in Wisconsin and uh found out that um uh in order to be, in in order to opt into that, your state has to um essentially become a partner in that effort um with the uh software development um and the and the manufacturer. So I'm just wanting to know, have you heard of anything um through your channels that Wisconsin is going to be um a part of that program in the future?
No, I have not. I did, I saw the news release about Minnesota um and and no, I have not heard of anything similar. I can certainly put some feelers out and see if there is anything.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Downing, go ahead.
Sean, you're muted.
You're muted.
Uh, getting back to what I was talking about a little bit earlier, um, I think we would benefit if we're serious about crushing COVID. Um, trying to identify areas that we can agree on that within reason we could educate the public on so they can take that level of accountability and uh adjust their own living for it uh if they haven't already. Um, maybe that's something we could work on in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Who's next? Anybody else have anything? Uh, Mr. Plunkett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in regards to Mr. Watson's point about the uh the Minnesota COVID notification, I've installed that on my smartphone and I'm not sure if that'll simply work when I'm across the border in Minnesota. I'm assuming that that's all that's set up, but we do have a number of people for uh which that may be relevant. On the other factor, um, I am incredibly concerned about the level of infection in our community and the implications that this has on our community as our hospitals overfill. Uh, and I would like to urge the council to consider bringing forth recommendations that acknowledge the reality that many people have not done their fair share in preventing this pandemic and have placed the burden upon others. And as a result, the pandemic has grown and has spread and has caused danger to our community. I think it's well past the point where action needs to be taken, but taking action now is the best way that we can preserve life and safety in our community. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything on this right now? Okay, next move on to administrator's report. If anybody has anything for Scott, Scott, if you have something for us.
Just a reminder that the city hall is open by appointment only. Uh, there's no, no walk-in um to that facility, so um, public that needs help is encouraged to try to use our um various virtual or or no, no contact options for service.
Mayor? Uh. Administrator Simpson, can you give uh an overview of kind of what it looks like with Santa driving around our neighborhoods? How how will that look for folks? And what, how, is there like a schedule or how do folks know when um essentially the ice cream truck of Santa will come around?
I can't, I can't give you those details. I don't think those details have been determined at this point.
I think it involves writing a letter to Santa first.
Yeah, I, I think, so the chamber is is planning to facilitate what they call a reverse parade, which means people don't come to to the parade route. They the um parade comes to you. Um, and I think they're still working on the details of that. And obviously, we're still looking at um, you know, factors in the community, and they're trying to determine how safe that is to do and and whether or not they're gonna go forward with it.
Okay.
So unfortunately, I can't tell you how how to figure it out because I don't think it's been figured out yet.
I think it's a great opportunity, especially if folks are doing their social distancing um and making sure that they're just doing what's safe for themselves. Um, I think that's a great opportunity um to also spread cheer and keep keep the um season alive and keep people happy. So if they do do something like that, maybe I'll I'll reach out to the chamber directly, but maybe get some kind of schedule so neighborhoods can know when that's gonna come around.
Mr. Mayor, if I could. Yep. Uh, ask a question of Assistant City Administrator Stroud, could you give us a just a quick recap of the uh transition, the EMS transition and how that's going? And we've got about a little little over a full week under our belt by now.
Sure. Um, it's going, it's going well, all things considered. Um, I think I talked to Dave Madison actually yesterday about this and I was, to be honest with you, he gave me a good report and I was hoping to have some a written report for you for tonight, but that was a little ambitious since they've only been at it for a week. Um, it's relatively busy week for them. They handled more than third and calls, which which is, which is up there for our service um in addition to a number of transfers. Um, their average response times for their first week hovered in the four-minute mark, which I was, which I was pleased to hear. Um, and we'll get some of that more um visualized data for you in in the coming days, if not weeks, because I would like to at least share a snapshot of what the first week looked like. But overall, he said it's been going really well and and I've heard of no issues.
Good, and that's, that's, that's clearly what we expected. So that's, that's good to hear. Good to hear the response times are are well below the the projected and and hopefully they continue, but um
Sure.
So far, so good. Glad to hear it. Okay, anybody else have any questions? Okay, let's move on to the council's report. Ms. Odine?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the council's report for October twenty twenty. General fund revenues through the end of October were eight million seven hundred and thirty-three thousand fifty-seven dollars or eighty percent of budgeted revenues. Revenues in October included one hundred and eighty thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars in fourth quarter transportation aids and thirty-eight thousand four hundred and nine eighty-nine dollars in building permits. Expenditures for the same period were seven million eight hundred and ninety-two thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars or seventy-two percent of budgeted expenses. Expenditures in October included thirty-three thousand four hundred and sixty seventy-six dollars for loan repayments related to the twenty fifteen fire trucks. Net revenues over expenditures as of October thirty-first, twenty twenty were eight hundred and forty thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Odine. I just have a couple of quick announcements here. I got some reappointments and uh new appointments. Uh, to the bid board, I'd like to reappoint uh Terry McKay through December of twenty twenty-three. Uh, I'd like to reappoint Kerry Olson through December twenty twenty-three at River Falls Housing Authority. I'd like to reappoint Matt Fitzgerald through December of twenty twenty-one. And on the, I have a new appointment on the utility advisory board of Matt Burning to replace Robert Lilo uh through the remainder of his term, which is April of twenty twenty-three. Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We accept your appointments.
Second.
Second, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
The Matt Fitzgerald for the uh, is that the Housing Authority? And is that like a three-year reappointment, but we're just reappointing him for a year at his um request?
Yeah, at his request, he just, he wants to help through the the process of um the director retiring and us figuring out what we're gonna do next for the next year. So he wants to stay on for the, any month. So I said, so that's no problem.
If he wanted to stay back on, he would end up reapplying in a year um or putting in a letter to you to stay on?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, Christie, we have a first and a second on the appointments.
First by Morissette, second by Downing, start the voting with Ms. Nadia.
Yes.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Pierce Stead.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Odine.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Hey, Christie, we have first and a second to adjourn.
Start with Mr. Morissette.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Plunkett. Nadia.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Pierce Stead.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christie. Okay, we are adjourned. Okay, everybody, have a great Thanksgiving. Take care. Thanks for all the staff tonight. Greatly appreciate all the help, guys.
Thanks.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Good night.
You have a Thanksgiving.
Hey, John?
Yes.
Could you give my cell a call regarding uh returning a device?